Welcome to the Selectments Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for September 25th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Town Administrator Weekly Update. Hello, US Jen.
So, the last email that I sent to Higgins was on September 10th. Still no response, so I turned it over to the attorney today.
Yep.
I mean enough.
Good.
See what he does?
Yep.
He asked me for a few documents, contracts and things like that. So, I'll have a conference call with him on Friday. But, I can't get answers from the, for the auditor if I can't get answers from the billing company.
Yeah, correct.
And I mean, it's been 15 days today, so.
Yep.
ACO is down to seven dogs on the list. And I'm looking for a liaison to that so that we can have further discussions. David would probably be the easiest because he sat in on the original email, he sat in on the original interviews and kind of has sat in on two or three of them, conversations we've had. But, I'm looking to schedule an executive session to have some further conversations. Do you have any objection to that being, David?
No, it'd be a good idea.
Okay. Printed off the General Assistance Ordinance changes for you guys in case you wanted to review them before the workshop, before the public hearing next week. It is base, there are basic numbers. Most of the changes were in the funeral costs that I found in reviewing the packet. Unfortunately, if someone passes away, they can't apply for general assistance for funeral costs for minimums, so that's what most of it is, but if you wanted to look at it. As you know, my assistant and I attended a training class last week. Just wanted to give you a couple of the highlights from that. They did release the two questions that were coming out for November. One's a bond question for highways, bridges and multi-modular facilities. And the second is a constitutional amendment that's going to say, "Do you favor amending the Constitution of Maine to allow persons with disabilities to sign petitions in an alternate manner as authorized by the legislature?" They haven't said what that method is yet, but those are the two questions that you'll be voting on. Some of the other, they had some, some pretty major changes election-wise, just gonna be a few of them. They changed some voter registration cards, really doesn't pertain to you guys. They are going to require now that the voter not only state their name, but they state their street address. So, please, the voters know that that is a state mandate, not a clerk's mandate or a town mandate. You have to, are gonna have to actually say it out loud now. Biggest change is that Maine has decided to move their primary for the presidential to March, only the presidential to March. So, what this is gonna look like for us is another election in March, but more importantly, really is gonna affect the unenrolled voters. Because if you're unenrolled and you choose to enroll in a party to participate in a primary or for any reason for that matter, you have to stay in that party for 90 days. So, what's gonna happen is people, you're gonna find people registering for a presidential, they're gonna be choosing their candidate, enrolling in that party, but then you're gonna have your local primaries in June, you're gonna, 90 days will not have gone by, so you're gonna have to stay in that same party. And some people, you know, they might not want that. They might wanna, you know, they might want to support a Republican president, but a Democratic sheriff, let's just say. So, people are, that are unenrolled really gonna need to look at their dates and figure out how they're gonna do that. And absentee balloting will be big to help you make, if you want to be in different parties. They currently allow 17-year-olds to register to vote and participate in primaries. They're lowering that age to 16 to register to vote, to state, just to register. Didn't really get a good feel or reason why that was happening, but it is gonna be, they're gonna be registering them at 16. They still can't do anything until they're 17 in the primary that they have to turn 18 before the regular election, but for, they are dropping the age to 16 for registrations, which...
Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but I think it's, some of those Democrats were trying to get it.
Ah, no, no, it doesn't have anything to do with dog parties.
16, so.
Know you can read minds.
Well, I saw it on TV once.
The concern from, the concern from the clerk's point is that, once they register to vote, they go on our incoming voting list, but they are marked that they need an age. You know, that they, you know, they're waiting age, but, you know, when you have a line going out the door and John Doe comes up and says his name and his street address, it's very easy to, you know, oh, yep, there he is and not catch the name thing, but we'll work on that. I've got like five or six other pages worth of amendments and changes if anybody wants to read them, but those were some of the highlights. Most of the other ones about ranked choice of voting and stuff really aren't gonna pertain too much locally, but I have them if you want to see them.
Are they, the ranked choice, is that something they're doing during the presidential thing too?
The ranked choice is not going to affect the presidential primary.
Cool.
They changed, yeah, like the minimum number of election clerks. They had, used to have to be completely even, now they're allowing you to bring in new, more unenrolled. It's just a variety of just odds and ends.
Oh, change.
Another day's project. The, last week, you guys reviewed the budget timeline from the treasurer, and I asked you if I could just kind of check the dates against the calendar. We did that, so you'll see that release to your department heads. Treasurer will be putting a memo out to them shortly with those dates so that everybody can start planning on the upcoming 19, 20 budgets. Deadline has come and gone for the paramedic slash EMT firefighter position. I've set up interviews per the liaison for Thursday, tomorrow night, at 6:30, at 7:00 and at 7:30. The rest, fire chief and his deputy will be here along with Mr. Wenshaw as the liaison.
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty good idea to have those guys ask, and they probably know more about it than I do.
We know more about the fire side of it, but you know plenty about the person, personality side of it, so.
Yeah.
Yes, and Dave and I, we chatted about the same questions, the same, I got to play mommy from, mother for a minute and remind him of all the things to keep the town out of any trouble, so.
Yeah.
So, the treasurer's office.
I hear it's all a buzz.
I need to take a sip, sip, it's not a buzz. I don't want to say I'm fighting something, but my throat is just really sore. All right, so for the last two or three years, we know that Michelle has had influx of wasps. She just always, this time of year gets a few. We spray them, we have a little hornet dance and they usually go away. So, last Friday, or Thursday, whatever, I mean, we were counting them in the 30s and 40s and 50s, high numbers, and they were just everywhere. So, we sprayed and then she sent you guys an email about the exterminator. So, Monday, I came in and it was worse, I mean, they were well over 100. So, I found an exterminator, it's here until 6, 7 o'clock. We got the exterminator to come out. He sprayed, so the problem is, is that, and I left it all open and hoping we can have a field trip so that you can see it. So, when he popped open the ceiling tile, he says that the way that the sheet rock and insulation was done, there's like sheets and then the square patches and then sheets and square patches, so he can't really push it up to look because of the way it's done. And Dave, you guys may know more about it, but it's not, it essentially wasn't his responsibility to go in and cut drywall. I mean, it's not, like if you have the square of the ceiling, it wasn't cut around that, so he couldn't just pop that open. It was like sheets going across the whole top and, and it was just pouring down the, it was a mess. Be happy we're on camera when I tell you. It took me hours to clean that office. So, anyway, so he gets up there and he finally, he does some spraying and stuff, and he certainly tried, and I emailed you his actual report. What I failed to mention was that between Friday and Monday when we came in, the ceiling had actually dropped, and, and we believed that that was probably the hornet's nest pushing down because they had gone from, you know, 30 or 40 to over 100. So, anyway, so the, he can't, he can't say 100%. The ceiling is still quite dropped, you're gonna see when we go in there, and he's quite nervous about it. So, I had Ken look at it today, which was a good idea, but maybe not a good idea because he's ready to condemn the office. Doesn't think it has anything to do with the hornet's nest, and they, were gone today. I didn't come into any yesterday or today. I think I had one today, but he thinks it says the ceiling's gonna fall in and that she needs to be out of there.
That's a suspended ceiling?
It's a ceiling.
Well, you can suspend it, but it sounds like there's another ceiling up.
I'm gonna show you, I left it all, don't make me look any worse on TV, I don't know. I can just tell you that it's, so, there are plastic strips going over the insulation. Ken says they need to be put up with wood and the whole, I can show you with the broom.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, they probably insulated it with plastic strapping over it.
Right, so the strapping's falling and it's, so it's starting to fall in. So, he did offer to do a temporary, because obviously we all want the treasurer safe, to hold a few things up, but you gotta look at it, but we need a contractor. So, our handyman is...
John.
Jonathan, and, you know, we do believe that he's got the qualifications based on his background with McLeod to do some work. Mr. Mann actually agreed, offered to help as well. So, I was talking to Bob and David actually mentioned this, we were talking about something else the other day.
Yeah, you were talking about handyman, and I said, well, Jonathan normally does some stuff around for us, I know he does carpentry.
And he was already our handyman, he does the sign and the odds and ends, so.
So, I thought maybe if Bob could relieve him for a little while to come down here work here, maybe Perry said he would jump in if we need to. I know he's just retired, but.
This is something different though, so it'd be, yeah, maybe if he's interested, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and Bob said it was kind of slowing down, so, but he also, when he offered to help so they could do it on a Tuesday or Thursday, but.
He's already on the town payroll and everything, so it's no real big.
Right, they're insurance covered and, so I want you guys to peek at it anyways, when we leave, just to kind of see, but, yeah, so, that's that. And he did, well, and Ken thought that the whole, essentially all of it will need to be done, but just to start with that one room, the middle office where the refrigerator is, you can start to see a little bit of sagging, nothing like the treasurer's office, but we'll show it to you and see what you think. Just an update on the well for the rec, I did speak to one of the rec members. So, I got the, I got the insurance sent over, the contractor sent us the insurance over. We have the original quote and did confirm with the digger that that, the well drilling company, that number hasn't changed, and no matter how far.
Is that a contract price or?
Yep, no matter, it's a contract price. And I asked, specifically asked that, no matter how far he had to dig, that number was not changing. So, that was $4,000. The warrant article was for $7,000, so the other $3,000 is designed for up to, for the digging and backwork, and they did tell me.
Is that, that $4,000 just for the well, that's not with the pump and everything?
I think that is the pump.
Is it everything?
Well, well pump and the, whatever goes down in the well, but nothing from?
The well beyond it, so that's where the pressure tanks and stuff will be covered by everything else.
By, yeah, right. But that's not, who will do that?
He does that, I believe.
Well, so, I mean, I, like I said, I had a.
He can, if he's available to do it, but.
Well, and that's where, I want to make sure.
You have separate.
So, we have to go out to bid for anything over $5,000. At budget season, he gave us a $4,000 quote, and that was it. He can't, they can't do two different jobs and submit them definitely over $5,000 and not go out to seal bid if it's all part of the same job. So, he said that piece wasn't changed, and as I understood it, and I don't, I don't want to quote if I spoke to Lisa or Carol, I'm sorry, because we've had a lot of rec things going on this week, but I feel like they were, they're just waiting for the land, the, excavation work quote, and that Streeter essentially said he'd be starting in November. So, it's coming together and everything seems to be fine, but.
He may be starting sooner, he might be starting the next week or two.
Oh, okay, yeah, I just got an email from one of them saying that November 1st. But, we need to get the other quote, but the well goes in first, I presume, before the digging, so.
Yeah, you got no way of starting from.
But, we do, so anyways, to answer your questions, and we got the insurance, we got, confirmed the quote, so it's all within the policy. Sanford Dam update, I sent you an email and, and I CC'd Mike Perrow in it. I, I think that we might have a, it's not so much a final number, but that, she did send over some information today that, there was a contract with WB, WP Davis Escavation and the amount of 304,650, and then GZA Environmental, looks like an additional 69,166. If, those are the final numbers, and, and Michelle has sent, we've sent another email saying, "Please send us a copy of the bill, please send us a copy of the contract." And I hope that you read that email, because at the bottom of it, it says that, you know, I don't cert, and this, we're replying to emails that they asked, they sent us a bill, so we're only corresponding back. "I don't serve on the dam coalition committee and the city manager is out. Should you have further questions regarding the Emory Mills project, I would recommend you taking it up with your dam coalition representative."
Yeah.
So, do you have the bids or the bills for the treasurer?
Nope.
Right?
No, no, we just, we just given, we're just giving numbers and whatnot and.
Right, but we don't have any finals, we don't know what's been, okay.
No, and then.
So, we're not at a line.
And that might not even be the final, because there's another phase to this. If, if what they do initially doesn't do exactly what they hope, there's a second phase that can be done immediately while they're there.
Okay.
So, and that could be.
And again, I.
Remember the numbers on that one, it's not huge, but it, well, anything to do with these dams is huge, but, I mean, it's not another 300,000, it's maybe another, I can't even guess what, remember what the number was, it was maybe 20 or 30.
I just want to make sure that the other, I mean, you understand that these emails, the correspondence began because we got an email from the city of Sanford asking for the first loan payment, and I just forwarded them to the treasurer, and she's like, whoa, wait a minute, I'm not paying these, you have bids, bills?
We have no bills.
So, that's where, I mean, so we're not chasing, I mean, not trying to start.
We need something right in there, we know what we're paying for, so.
So, if the total project, and this came from your treasurer, was 373,816, based on the last email we got, that would make our share 93,454.
Sounds about right, from what I remember from the last meeting.
So, and we have 82,000 appropriated, but because of the way they did the $5,000, the loan, if we can pay those $5,000 payments over the next four years, save the 20 grand now, only pay out the difference of 73 and still be okay. So, we've got some options, but I think I'm just gonna stop emailing until we get any more bills, until we get an actual bill.
Yeah, it's been quite a process over the last three years, putting this whole thing together with.
No, I know, and we're just trying to pay the bills.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I'm just gonna give you a little, you know the backdrop mainly of you. Mainly just for you, you don't have the full background on this, so.
Little bit, not much.
Yeah, but it's, it's been quite a process, and it's been, you know, started out a couple hundred thousand, and it went up to 500,000, and now it's down to just under 4, so, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I have on that. Just a reminder that we need many October meetings so we can start updating the calendar and website. The dam gates, I think that Mr. Langley will tell you during his update, but that's been completed. He went over and checked it out, the bill has come in, and I did send that over to the administrative assistant in Newfield, hoping to get a portion out of them.
So, we, we're paying HA Stone and then they will reimburse us?
We went ahead and paid the bill. Possibly, yes. You guys agree to pay it either way, and it's gonna be, you know, bonus if they reimburse some of it.
Yeah.
School reached out to us wanting to know if we'd have a trunk or treat box in the hall, that's for their upcoming Halloween, so if anybody is in the candy aisle and feels like they want to stock up and drop it off, there's a good place.
They've dropped it off already or?
Ah, they're gonna drop the box off tomorrow night. And we did, we had a bunch of orders in the, last few days for rec, I think they're pretty much all caught up, got their Amazon orders, medals, so that seems to be all done and caught up. And, what other thing? I don't, actually, I'll hold off on the other item. I think that's it, with the agenda in front of you. Couple of old business, department heads, I do need to add the, so Mary Grant, Chair of the Mary Grant is here, he's gonna speak with you. Will, Joe, are you doing updates or just here for the sand? Just sand? Okay, so Mary Grant will be our only update there. We've got sand bids to open, truck bids, boat trailer, we got some abatement supplements, form of information, some appointments. Anything I missed?
You put classes on, under G?
Classes?
Classes.
New business.
Yeah, and a new business. Better than that, I'm tickled.
Tickle?
Tickle.
Sign away and I was gonna make an update.
I'm tickled pink, last time I said I was tickled pink, you, it was, you didn't have a clue.
Kind of like the DG's you were saying.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. It's about the closest you're gonna hear me to saying. You want me to set these over here and you can start in on them? Only different weeks?
Oh, different weeks.
Yeah, I guess for two weeks.
Are you seeing double there for a second?
I just thought of it, the, so one of the HR classes that attended recently, Michelle brought back information, we can no longer have gender-specific bathrooms?
My mother always told me, I have nothing good to say.
You didn't even look up. So, anyways, this is serious. So, you did, we did take the signs down, one of them is now.
Two ones restroom, one's employees, right?
Ah, one's restroom to one's employees, yes.
To which forces that?
I don't know, I just came from the Department of Labor and someone else, so.
Oh, that's where I came from, Department of Labor.
The lines went back up today from half stat for firefighter.
For the guy at Farmington, yeah. It is, is brother out of hospital yet?
Not yet. But, he was upgraded from critical to serious.
That's good, right?
I never thought I'd see, be happy that someone's upgraded to serious. Yeah.
Crazy.
It is.
Other than the applications, is there anything, David, that you want for the resumes tomorrow? I think it was, Ed, they, David, you wanted to end the peek at him too, just with his background, just look at him, yeah.
I think, I think I had mentioned something about some questions there, we want to make sure we have a list of questions so we can ask them all the same. I didn't know if Rick or Dave had come up with any of those.
So, I spoke to Rick today, he came in to review the applications, and we kind of chatted along that line. He didn't provide them, but he did know that he, you know, they had to ask the same questions, so.
Yeah, okay.
Do you, you want me to come up with some generics for you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I have no idea what to ask a paramedic.
Well, I'll give you some more of the administr, administrative type ones and let them focus on the.
I've got some, some ideas, some questions there, but when it comes to the paramedic stuff itself, it's, I'm not gonna pretend that I do know. Just for the lights, yeah.
Electrician, should be a couple, yeah. So, we did the, and the librarian was up in today and she did say how much different, how much better the lights were and how much, what difference it was.
All is good over there now?
Yep, all is good.
Good.
So, we got the bill for that, we signed up for the rebate through Efficiency Maine, I did that today. All the lights outside are fixed, so.
What was the rebate, what were they talking about for a rebate on that?
Well, the rebate, he included it, he took it off the price of the.
So, he already took off, he's gonna receive the rebate?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, he took it off the cost.
Yeah, that's good.
It's good that way, you don't have to remember it, fussle that are.
Right.
Yeah.
You got what account to pay back into and.
Exactly.
Tim Blake, he's supposed to come in every week, huh?
This one goes with, David, can I have that, the minutes you have?
What's that?
Can I have those minutes that you have for a minute?
Oh, this is the 18th right here, do you want, yeah, that's the one you want, right?
I just want to. I don't know, I think that should go. One, two, what's it say? One, two.
We pull it, that's how.
This one is for sure.
Give the ads for.
Oh, the ads, yeah.
This one's not, they have to, you guys have to do that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, don't be sorry.
Putting on the bids and all that.
Yep.
Yeah, so I sent you guys a, I sent you an email of all of the current classes, and I, because you had said you were interested in one.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be able to.
I don't know that they've come out with 2020 yet, do you remember what I sent you? I sent you guys an email with an attachment of a.
I just don't know if it's on 2020, that's what I was wondering, I can look again.
What class you talking about?
Well, I sent you guys an email just with all of the, I think one of the last few meetings we're talking about training classes or different classes that were available through AMUNESMO.
I was just wondering if 2020 had come out yet, you know, like from January.
Oh, yeah, that's coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, too quick.
Ready to plow snow, Ed?
Hmm?
You ready to plow snow?
Am I ready to plow snow?
Yeah.
I could be ready. Mentally, I'm ready. Physically, the truck's not set up yet, but, I mean, just gotta throw the stuff on, but I'm not planning on doing it tonight, so.
Let's see about January 1st, maybe.
That'll be good. Yeah, second.
Yeah, second would be better.
Yep.
I remember years where I didn't drop the snow plow until January.
Yep. Eighty-nine ninety, I was building my...
No, you don't wanna talk about snow.
Eighty-nine ninety, I was building my parents' camp. I plowed Eagle Road three times that year.
Yep.
So, let's have another...
The whole year?
The whole year, three times.
Last year...
I mean, road crews, I think, were out more, but that's all I had to plow the camper.
Last year, my father's road commissioner, he made enough to pay the registration on the trucks.
There you go, yeah, it's all good. Okay, all set with the warrants, approval of the agenda, we kind of already did that, but we'll do it formally.
Make a motion, oh, go ahead.
Nope, you go, you got it.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Call vote, all in favor, all opposed? Minutes of, we have, what, two meetings to do?
Um, I've done September 11th. I wasn't at that one, so you guys have to go through that, but, um...
Let's do 11th first.
Okay.
We hear a motion to approve September 11th.
Make a motion to approve the September 11th selectman meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Move the seconded to approve September 11th minutes. Uh, for any discussion, call for vote, all in favor, all opposed?
It's not signed and sealed.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for the September 18th meeting.
I'll second that. You warrant here for that? Okay, any discussion?
Nope.
Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed, okay. Okay, Department Head Committee Chair updates, Mary Grant.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Go ahead.
Come there and get...
There we go. Yes, you're good.
Uh, Mary Grant Committee has been, uh, working on and off via email over the summer, planning the pumpkin carving party. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting a couple of weeks from now to finalize, uh, but so far, we decided that pumpkin carving party, say that 10 times fast, will be October 19th from 2:00 to 6:00 at the grant. We're obviously gonna have pumpkin carving. We want to have a trick-or-treat through the woods for kids. Uh, we want to engage, uh, maybe the library board to maybe read a story while the kids are trick-or-treating. Uh, we're still kind of working all of that out. Uh, marshmallow roasting, food, snacks, you name it, we're gonna have a good time. What the board would love to see is our select board to make an appearance, to show up, spend 20 minutes, half an hour, visit with people. Um, your support means a lot to us. It means a lot to the community.
And this is gonna be on the 19th?
Uh, Saturday, October 19th, yes.
Okay.
Um, so like I said, half an hour, just come and visit with, with the town, visit with the people there, see what it's all about, maybe walk through the woods, get some candy for yourselves. Have a burger or hot dog, we'll go from there. Um, other than that, uh, from the community, we're looking for donations. If people want to donate pumpkins, uh, candy, food supplies, decorations, anything like that, so if someone wants that, they can, uh, message me on Facebook, they can message Mary Grant Nature Preserve, I'll get the message and we can coordinate. Uh, that was all I had. Any questions?
Sounds wonderful.
What kind of, what kind of food are you looking at or looking for, I guess I should say?
Um, so far, we're planning burgers, hot dogs, uh, potato salad, uh, and then munchy, snacky type stuff.
Okay.
We're probably gonna have some kind of pumpkin donuts, we're still working on that, uh, brownies, sweets the kids like to eat, stuff like that.
Okay, all right, I'll come.
Okay.
I think Myers coming with the kids.
I just gotta look at my schedule and I'll try to be there.
Perfect.
Me as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Dan, make sure that your committee members get sworn in. The board's gonna appoint them tonight, so reminder for all of you.
You're welcome.
Get sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other department heads committee chair updates? Okay, on to old business, hopper road damage.
So per your instruction, that's being turned over to legal, so any further discussion will be in executive session pursuant to...
Yep, turned over to MMA, legal.
Legal, yes.
Okay. Road commissioner form?
So, Michelle and I got talking, so this is the form we just recreated, just created a couple of weeks ago. So, I mean, eh... So I feel like part of my job is to make sure that you guys, help you do your job, and part of that job is to make sure that the, we're following the ordinances that the voters put in place, right? Wrong or otherwise, that's our job to make sure that that all flows. So when we look at the road commissioner ordinance and it says that the board has to hear it and has to review it first, that's where I come in as your administrator, to make sure that happens, so it's a circle. So, Michelle was looking at some bills and we were talking about one of the projects, um, doesn't really matter which one, but it, so, we had the form, you know, filled out, and once the minutes got approved, I'd give it to her, but sometimes, like, if the minutes are a week or two out, or even if we don't get them typed, let's say that, we'll pick on Will, so let's say Will's here on a Tuesday and he mentions a project, you guys are all set, Wednesday he does it, you know, he turns in payroll, let's say it's a small project, he turns in payroll for Friday, well, the video is not online for Cheryl to take minutes until probably Friday, because it's a three-day turnaround, so by Monday, he's looking for payroll for that. Michelle can't, um, you know, she, is she withholding those?
She's not finding her own time to...
Right, it's just the circle is not working, so, um, she just feels like as you guys sign the bills, you need to mentally know if, you know, we're gonna scratch the form and it's up, it's up to you politely to, um, when you sign off on that bill, to know in your mind whether or not that road commissioner met the ordinance by bringing it to you prior to you signing it. Does that make sense?
We'll back up a little bit.
You lost me to on that one.
So...
So, so let's, so let's just say that, that project, an H-road project happened, just the way we talked about it. Monday comes around, he submits bills for it, you guys haven't even seen the minutes, never mind Michelle even getting that form and proof that you got, that it was presented to you like the ordinance says it has to be. So she's saying, listen, if the bill goes in Tuesday to the selectmen, they're seeing that H-road bill, it's just gonna be their responsibility not to sign it if they don't mentally remember that the road commissioner presented it to them per the ordinance like they were supposed to.
Well, why can't, whoop, go ahead.
I was gonna say, can he still present the form to us and we'll initial it that night?
Well, what it is, she doesn't know, that's the problem.
You're talking about the minutes have to be...
Well, I mean, yeah, we could do it that way. We could do that way and not have...
We'll just initial off on it when he presents it to us, as we've seen it. It's gonna get attached to the paperwork. We'll just look for one of those forms every time we sign off on this paperwork.
When they come up that night?
Yeah.
We just sign off on it.
Just sign it, sign the date that you, and then we'll give it to her the next day, so regardless of when the bill comes in, yeah. We're trying to protect everybody, you know what I mean, so that the ordinance is being followed, but the minute piece of it was, it just wasn't working out time-wise, so, we'll do that. So whether it's, and I know, and I spoke to Michelle and let them know that you approve both forms, because it was working better for each one of them, so when they present a project, we'll just make sure that you have a copy from me as well. I'll get the board to sign it, we'll turn it in and...
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Maybe what we'll do is, I don't know if it'll work out, but at the beginning of the meeting, when we do the agenda, um, you know, when we're doing our minutes, say, if the road commissioners have that project, they can just give that, copy them off, so we have that beforehand.
Yeah, and I mean, and typically, I mean, and we haven't really followed this practice, but, you know, noon time of the day of the meeting really is a deadline to get things on the agenda, I mean, you know, these, you know, 5:30, I mean, it's difficult to...
Yeah, but they're, they're pretty much on the agenda every week as department heads.
Yeah, I mean, right, and we try to list them out if we can, but, and they're good about it. They'll email it to me that, when they, when they get it, so...
Okay.
Yep. Yep, works for me.
Okay, perfect.
On to new business, open sand bids.
So I have to say, so, I thought it was kind of funny, I mean, so one of the guys, and I don't know which one it is, these sand names don't mean anything to me, and I won't mention his name, because I don't even know which one it was, but he came in to bring me a sand bid and he came in with a little bucket. I'm like, what is that? He's like, I brought you, brought you a bucket to look at. I'm like, it was, I thought it was funny, but I sent him home with his bucket.
Okay.
All right, so we got three. So just to reiterate, so it was three eighths inch screen sand up to 4,000, and it had to be delivered, and this form is supposed to be in there. And I called, um, both the road guys, so they're here for that. You wanna come up to the podium and...
Why don't we open it up first?
Okay. Just figured they'd give you input.
And I'm standing there and watch us.
Hey, it's a good forum.
I can't see. I have my glasses on, I'm just giving you a knife, I don't have my glasses on.
You're gonna hurt me with that thing. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention to the conversation you guys were having.
Deadline was Tuesday, 24th, we got this everywhere advertised, so...
All right, one down.
That was almost painful.
I know.
I have a card that goes with it.
Yes, and here's some...
Thank you. Thank you. Hope the suspense is killing everybody. Put this stuff all together. There we go. Okay, the first one we have. Monarch Mountain Quick Crete. And... Their price is $10 per yard, bid delivered to Sandborne Road up to 4,000 yards. Does your company have normal year-round business hours, outside of routine weekends and holidays? Yes. Okay, that's pretty simple.
That was Monarch.
That was Monarch. Thank you. This one is landscapers depot. Their price is 9.45. And they also answered yes to the question of being, coming year-round hours.
9.45.
9.45. Per yard bid delivered to Sandborne Road up to 4,000 yards. Thank you. And the last one is from Carroll Materials LLC.
That's a lot better than I thought it would be.
Yeah, but it doesn't, doesn't help the process any. Their price is 11.88 per yard, delivered to Sandborne Road up to 4,000, and they have also answered yes to our question.
It was 11.88.
Eleven, eleven dollars and 88 cents.
And who got the bid last year? Was it Monarch?
I think it was Monarch.
Is that who we're giving?
I think it was actually for, I think it was actually through Al White, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Al went through Monarch, that's Monarch's where the sand came from, the contractor went through Al White.
Do you want to let them discuss it in the other room?
Yep. Yep, give those to Al, he can, they can come up, I can handle doing this easy.
I just want them to talk with the company's owner.
Fine. So just to recap, it's $10 for Monarch, 9.45 for landscapers depot, and 11.88 for, was that Carroll? So...
We've had it at our, at our hall of sand before.
Yep.
They'd be able to sell a few years ago.
Yep. So that was the sand bid.
What's, um, what's the deal? They had left the room for what reason?
Oh, they just gonna, Jennifer's just giving them the lowdown on...
Oh, okay.
Taking a look at it, where both of them are new.
Yep.
They'll look at the bids and maybe come back and give us that recommendation tonight, or...
I might not, I might do it next week.
I mean, they don't have to do it tonight.
No, but seems pretty straightforward, I think, I don't know.
I don't know. Myself, it's a good, good idea to go see the pile of sand you're getting from.
Exactly.
That's what we always did.
Yep.
Because every year, the pile of sand's different.
Yep. Yeah, it could be the same, it could be coming on the same side of the mountain, but different vein.
Yeah.
So... Yep. True. See, I don't have this trouble where I work, we don't use sand.
You know where I do it, so...
Nope, we have a little sand pile if we have to dig into it.
I try to get some sand, because when we get those ice storms, well, when it starts to turn it over, you know, the salt was freezing on us.
Yep.
And you put a little sand in, you don't have to worry about it so bad, believe it or not.
Can I see you for just one second?
You can.
Yeah, we use 100% salt priority, yep. Yeah, before last, I put out maybe a yacht, not even a yacht, a salt of sand on a troubled spot we had with a lot of water buildup, ice buildup. But other than that, it's easy.
Yeah.
Set your calibration and watch what you do.
Maybe someday here.
You never know.
This hopper road, um, damage. How come it was sent to MMA, legal versus like...
Our attorney?
Yeah.
We did talk about that.
I just, I didn't watch the meeting.
Where, well, it's not so much legal, but MMA is our insurance company.
Oh, okay, all right.
If you get a damaged claim like that, you'd send it off to your insurance company and let them battle it. That way, it's not, if, if we send it to our attorney...
All right, then where?
And he comes back and says, you know, no, there's no claim here, and say the individual goes further, takes it to court or whatever, uh, and our insurance company hasn't heard about it.
Okay.
They're the ones that's gonna have to say yay or nay, they're the ones with the check. That's kind of was my thought on it, and we agreed on that, so...
All right.
It just pulls, and why should we spend money on, with our attorney?
Right, if it's something that they...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that can get done that way, so...
Yep, makes sense.
Yep. So...
Thank you, sir chair, it's always, um, you know, one of those, you know, we've got two fairly new road commissioners, and we certainly, you know, we, the, the process, I mean, everything is transparent, um, however, when you talk about companies, you just want to make sure that, you know, people are still able, that road commissioners are able to share any concerns, and we pulled David in, um, having the past knowledge with some of these companies, so, um, after speaking to both of the gentlemen, the idea is that, um, you know, unfortunately, the Carroll material is a dollar, what, it's a dollar eighty-eight, dollar, dollar eighty higher, so...
That's, that's the best sand you're gonna buy.
And I'm sure it is, but that, I mean, so they have, you know, probably moved that one out. They want to go out and take, take a look at both of them, so they're asking that you table it until next week. It's a difference of 55 cents per yard, so...
Perfectly understandable.
You guys will look at both of them and it'll be on next week's agenda?
Sounds great.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, now hopefully, we're gonna sell the truck.
We are gonna sell the truck.
Okay.
Was there a minimum bid on the truck?
2,500.
There was, okay.
Yes.
So how do you know we're gonna sell one?
Because if anybody put one in here for less than 20, nevermind, I can't say that out loud, I keep forgetting that camera. It says a minimum bid 2,500, so why would you put a bid in for less than that?
You, I've seen some crazy stuff.
They did sell it.
Again, all the details, and make sure you have this little form in there.
Re-bid?
That was good. It's a 92, it doesn't have that many miles on it, really.
Could your truck close it again?
This is a 92 F-350.
Bringing better money, I thought it was gonna bring. Amazing, being a Ford, anyway.
That's got the seven, I think that's got the seven-three in it.
Yeah.
This is, this got that diesel in it?
Yeah, it also has a, and the transmission, I think, was redone, well, nine, 10 years ago now, but anyway. Okay, I got one.
Last name?
Pardon?
I just wanted to write the last name down.
I'm gonna give you his whole name.
Okay.
Wait two seconds.
John, John, sorry.
John White. Uh, this is a bid on 92 F-350 pickup. It's actually, it's one time, so from John White, his bid is 41.67, 4,167. And the other two here are actually on the bid forms, his was on a piece of paper, but that doesn't make any difference. The next one is from Charlie Heideck, and his bid is 2,733. 2,733. And the last one is Randy Kinville. Surprise, surprise, I like Randy. Um, his bid is 26.25. Randy is actually the one who bought our last truck we bid, we put out the bid. So, there's the three bids. Uh, 26.25, 27.33, and 41.67. I think it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, we wanna make a motion, we accept.
John White?
John White at 41.67 for the F-350.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed?
It's a good truck for that kind of money.
It is, yeah. Yep, utility body on, it's worth some bucks right there. Okay. Now we're down to a boat and trailer.
There was a minimum on that, no?
I don't recall. Did we put a minimum on that?
Yes, sir.
We did.
500.
I think that might have been, yeah, I do remember that now. I mean, did we get on that one?
One bid?
Yes, sir.
One. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. He's going home with something tonight, anyway. Okay, we have one bid from Randy Kinville for 500 and $10. What's your wishes?
That we accept it. Make a motion when we, we accept Randy Kinville's bid of five hundred and ten dollars for the smoke and craft boat, homemade trailer.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Randy Kinville's bid for five hundred and ten dollars. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. There you go. The other thing that should do is free up some space over there in that other building to store our own boat.
Yes. I thought we had some, there's been discussion about that anyways, hasn't there?
Yeah, in the past, we've batted different things around, never had anything.
Right now, we're storing it up to my shoes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
Maybe we oughta speak to the chief.
Yeah, we'll see if there's, yeah, because that frees up.
Well, that'll free up some funds, too, I mean, they're not gonna, not gonna have to worry about the storage fees and all that, we still have to get the maintenance and all that done to it, but, uh.
And we also talked back along about the possibility of transferring the use of that.
Yeah, Ken really hasn't been using it a whole lot, has he?
It didn't go in the water at all last year, I think he did have it in the water this year.
Yeah, so we ought to talk to Ken about that, see what he thinks.
Last time I talked to him, it was, it was pretty much in favor of it.
Okay.
I mean, we should talk to him again.
Get him up here some night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Okay, that's taking care of abatements, abatements and supplement, supplemental.
We have quite a few. The first one is for the Bradley property on Garvin Road. The valuation was changed based on the fire that had happened prior to the April first, two thousand nineteen date.
Okay, this is the one, wait, last up on, last one in on the right, by the way, okay. Okay, do we normally say names on these?
Yeah, it's public information.
Yeah, we do, okay. Okay. Colleen Jude and Donna Bradley. Town of Acton has received the two thousand nineteen assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of our review, we have granted an abatement, till we vote on it, um, for map and lot two fifteen dash double oh four. Reason for the abatement is reflex fire damage. So, land stays the same at fifty-five thousand, the building value goes from one forty-six seven seven six to twenty-three five seventeen, I think there's an old building there, so.
Yeah.
So the tax drops from twenty-four thirty-one forty to nine hundred and forty-six thirteen.
Yeah, there's no, there's no house on it at all now, it's gone, right?
Yeah, it's just, there's some sort of building on there.
Yeah, but the one I'm thinking of is a barn-type building across the street.
Dennis went out and viewed it, assessed it.
Dennis had to look at, okay.
Yeah, he did all of these.
Yep. So, yeah, it's been done by Johnny O'Donnell's, and that's what they've come up with, so, what's your wishes?
Make a motion that we, uh, accept a tax abatement for Bradley, Colleen, Jude, Donna.
Yep.
Probably ass back.
Kind of the way it's, yeah. It's kind of the way it's spelled out, okay.
Yeah.
Moved and?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Should I date this?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-first.
The next one is for the Wilson Lake Trust, care of the Wicks, Cynthia, it's at ninety-three Ran Road. Map and lot one thirty-five dash double oh five. Same all information earlier as, as the past one, all these are the same. Uh, the reason for the abatement on this one is the homestead exemption was missed. So, land value stays the same at two hundred and thirteen thousand, actually, all the values stay the same, except they have to add, uh, put in the, the, uh, homestead exemption. So the tax bill goes from three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine sixty to three thousand seven hundred and twenty-six fifty-five. So it's a drop in, what, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and five cents.
Make a motion, we accept Wilson Lake Trust tax abatement.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Thank you. How many do you have to thank?
Quite a few, I've got probably four or five more.
Okay, I was just cur, just curious. Okay, this one is for Richard and Joyce Foley. From, um, from map one one three dash zero six one. Reason for the abatement on this one, the land area was adjusted from point one three acres to point oh nine acres. So the drop in this one is on the land value, it was at one sixty-five, five forty-five, it's going to one sixty-eight oh two. So the valuation drops four thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars, and the tax bill drops fifty-seven fifteen, so. What's your wishes?
Make a motion to accept the abatement for Richard and Joyce Foley.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
All right, so these next ones include supplements, so they're a little more
Okay.
interesting. Well, not interesting, but a little more to it, so, I'm gonna try to explain to you what happened and what you have in front of you. So, this is regarding, um, this is regarding Countryside Corner on Youngs Ridge Road.
Yep.
And the property that the Andersons own personally, okay? So essentially what happened is Lisa Dunbar bought Countryside Corner. So that transfer should have happened. What inadvertently happened was that the assessing agent transferred the Anderson's home to Lisa Dunbar.
Oh.
Yes. So what you're seeing is two things, you're getting an abatement for Lisa Dunbar because a bill went out to her for the Anderson's home. So we need to abate that and get that bill completely out of her name. And then Countryside Corner is getting an abatement because, because they don't own, they, they got billed for the Countryside Corner, which should have been transferred to Dunbar. So Countryside Corner didn't own it, so they're both getting, you're abating those and zeroing them out. And then, in the same breath, you are signing two supplemental tax bills. Supplemental tax bill in this case, Lisa Dunbar is for Countryside Corner, to compare the map and lots, which I've done. And then the Andersons are happily looking for their tax bill for their house that got transferred inadvertently. So you're signing two abatements and supplements.
Okay.
All on the same two properties. And that's what these next three or four are.
With all that discussion and, or explanation, do I need to read anymore?
No, I think that's fine.
That's it.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the abatements and supplements.
So basically, what happened was, is
He transferred the wrong property.
They just went this way, and we were just reversing them back.
That's all we're doing.
Okay. Are you two happy with that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the abatement for Countryside Corner.
Yep, and?
Lisa Dunbar.
Lisa Dunbar and the Andersons. Andersons must be in here somewhere with their.
They're the supplements.
And also the adjoining supplements.
Yep, hang on, let's just get the right name for. There it is.
Deborah and, um, Robert and Deborah Anderson.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Do you have these in any particular order?
No, I'll second it, so.
The, uh.
Supplements, yeah, you'll sign an assessor certificate.
Sign the letter that goes with it.
Um, there'll be a cert, uh, assessor certificate in the, in the end, I just wanted you to be able to compare that the numbers
Okay.
were washing.
Yep, yep. Yep. And then this letter here, you need a signature on that?
Um, no, it doesn't, what does it, well, who does it say?
Board of Assessors, it says.
No, that's fine.
Sincerely, Board of Assessors, Town of Acton.
Yeah, you can sign it, that's fine.
That goes with that. There you go.
Did you sign on this one or what, sign on that?
Hmm?
What else did I sign on that second page?
I don't think so, we don't need to sign the tax bill, right?
No, that's just
Supplemental.
They can compare them.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so the next one, um, is similar, you're gonna see an abatement from the, to the Holsworth Family Trust, which did in fact transfer their property to Stephen Sharette, uh, before the April first date. And the transfer was not done, so we are abating seventeen thirty-five sixty-nine to the Holsworth, and we are billing Sharette seventeen thirty-five sixty-nine.
Okay, you had the, we've heard the discussion on this one. Do you need a motion on this one?
Make a motion that we, uh, accept a tax abatement for Holsworth Family Trust and Stephen Sharette, uh, what's that?
Revocable trust.
Revocable trust. And supplement.
Yep, and the supplement tax bill.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded, do I hear a motion, uh, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
And while you're signing those, because we have two more that are gonna be similar, I just want to go on the record for saying that out of these four, and I'm not gonna nitpick which one's a which, uh, one was definitely a new house assessing issue. Uh, one of the deeds actually did transfer two properties over inadvertently, it was done by an attorney's office, and the other one, uh, registry of deeds, recording date in the upper right-hand corner was wrong, so these are not, um, all on O'Donnell's, so. Please don't start calling me about. All right, the next one is Stevens and T A I B B I, same thing, uh, it was, uh, Stevens sold the property to them by April first, it wasn't transferred out. Now you've got twelve sixty-seven eighty-two and twelve sixty-seven eighty-two. Abatement and a bill to match.
Thank you. Need a motion on this one.
So this is a supplement, what do you write?
Same.
They're all abatements and supplements, abate is giving back to one person, and the other is billing someone else.
I make a motion, uh, we accept tax payment for Gerald and Dorothy Stevens and sup, uh, what's that, what's her last name? Frank and Lynn, Tibby, Tibby?
That's why I spelled it.
Okay, and supplement, yeah.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
The next one, Mr. McIntyre, Timothy, um, did, uh, he was, he was given two pieces of property when in fact he only purchased one. So we abated him for one and billed the correct owner from the other one.
Okay.
I make a motion, we accept tax payment for Timothy and Carol McIntyre and Susan C. Shaw with supplement.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
And last one is just a piece of land, same situation, an abatement and a supplement for one eighty-four and change.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion on this one?
Make a motion, we accept a tax payment from Robert and Deborah Moore and Bruce, Bruce Denise Baldwin. With supplement.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, do I hear any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
All right, so the last thing that you need to sign is the assessor's certificate of a supplemental assessment, if you remember, when you commit taxes in the beginning, you instruct the tax collector to collect X amount of dollars. You just took X amount off with all those abatements, so in order to certify the valuation pages, you need to instruct the tax collector to, uh, recollect. So if you would have added up all of those supplements, uh, they would have totaled the nine thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents, so here are the three forms you can look over, um, and there are two places for you to sign. Essentially, it's a new tax commitment to the new people.
Okay.
So we'll have to make a motion on that one, right?
Uh, yeah, you actually made a motion on all the supplements already, so it's just a matter of signing those for the commitment book.
Okay, and there's the breakdown of?
Yeah.
Yep, of each one that you did.
The ones we just did. Okay. Okay, freedom of information.
I attached the email so that you could see that came from the gentleman and the actual freedom of information request.
Okay.
He'd already, he'd already done the freedom of information before, is this a separate one, another one?
I believe this is, might be the third or fourth.
Yeah, it's been a few, yeah.
Yeah, so if you read the top cover letter, um, we are still diligently working on them. We did get the maps to him, we did get the, um, I mean, we're working on it as hard as we can.
Yep.
Now you, we talked about this, I think, last week, there's, there were a bunch of them doing the same thing, is he the one that's
Yes.
now doing it for everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But the last one that you signed last week was on the subdivisions that were how many years ago? Remember, we talked about the subdivision last, last time, and the subdivision was, I mean, it was five.
It was already approved a couple, four or five years ago, right?
Right, so
The Buzzard Road.
We're going through all those records, trying to get all the emails and correspondence.
Yeah.
There's also a portion of the zoning that, that he's looking at, um, he did come in, and I met with him on Friday, we went through, um, some of the town meeting minutes from around ninety-one. Um, unfortunately, the, the certified minutes that are in the vault say something to the effect that, you know, shall the zoning, shall the zoning amendments as presented pass?
And we don't have any recording of it back then.
Right, so that's why now, like, when we do our warrants, you know, they may be twenty pages long, but we put every single one in there, so that those certified's go in those sealed books, um, we're, he found the town meeting timeline based on the zoning books, so we're trying, I mean, I'm
Yep.
So that one just came in, so we'll start working on that one.
Okay.
Read it out loud.
And this one here, he is looking for the new sketch. New sketch plan for the proposed development of seven sixty Youngs Ridge Road and any other materials associated with September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen email letter. From Jones and Beach. Read into the records of the planning board meeting on September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Also, anything else which has been received by the Town of Acton that has been received between September nineteenth and September twenty-fourth. So I assume in, to be with the same information, so.
Did you read, you read the top page?
Yeah, this is.
Okay, enclosed is a new Okay, enclosed is a new Freedom of Infig...
I just wanna make sure you read...
Oh, yeah, I read it, yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine. As long as you start.
Yep. 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 So, okay. What's your wishes? Well, we had assigned it anyway, we gotta do it.
Right.
So...
We can't... We can't not do it. That would not be a good idea.
See if we can squeeze all the signatures into that, just...
I'll just show it.
There you go. Okay, appointments.
Uh, so these come from the Mary Grant Committee. When they got together on Saturday, they double-checked with all the members to make sure that they wanted to stay on, so those are all pertaining to that same committee.
Okay. The way we've done these in the past is read the basics and then approve them all at the same time?
Yeah. Block voting, right?
Kinda sorta. Okay, we have Certificate of Appointment Title 30, MRSA 2253. Excuse me. Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine. Um, I'll read all the names in a second, but it says, "The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Mary Grant Committee Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2020, given under our hand this 25th day of September, 2019." And you don't have to be a resident to be a member of this. Okay. So, we have Barbara Secar, Richard Neal, Linda Leck, Laura Duskowski, Virginia DeBoer, and Bobby Joe Rogers. What is your wishes?
Make a motion to accept the Certificate of Appointment for the, say, Mary Grant.
Mary Grant Committee?
Committee.
Member?
Okay, member. I don't think I need to really read anything else.
Just read off the names, yep.
Okay, just their names, okay. Barbara Sucker, Richard Neal, Linda Leck, Laura Duskowski, Virginia DeBoer, and Bobby Joe Rogers.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. I signed the worst my signature gets.
Yeah, mine's, uh, looking bad now. Who was going to initial it?
Good. Okay, appointments are done. I don't think I've signed this much in a Selectman's meeting in nine years.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Okay.
We've had a very busy week.
Pardon?
We've had a very busy week.
Yeah.
We had a light week last week, so...
Yeah, it was. It was. Last week, new business was nothing.
It's awesome.
We had none.
I don't feel so bad now.
No. No, it's fine. You gotta do what you gotta do, too, so... Okay, next is classes.
All the classes?
I got that right here.
A bunch of classes coming up. We've gotten emails from a number of different people. I sent out a note to you guys just to see what you were thinking and give you a back... Give you a little update. Not an update, but just to see if you're interested. This was Conducting Effective Workplace Investigations. That was the one mainly I was interested in. So...
Where is it?
That one's actually... That one's at MMA in Augusta, I believe. Yeah, that's the one that I sent you, so...
Yeah, we'll go on.
Yeah, it's, uh...
Eleven eight.
Yeah, November... November 8th. It's an all-day class. You interested in it?
Uh, yeah, we probably ought to take that. Well, I mean, uh...
Yeah.
Good idea.
I think we should, yeah. So... Okay, good. No, I just mainly wanted to have it on here and just hoping that we're looking at this stuff.
I also have a class I'm taking on October...
It's in my office. I have to look at the IDO, have you registered? You guys saw the email that I sent you from May Municipal with the list for all the calendar year?
Yes. Yep. Yep, this is one that stood out to me, so... I mean, they're all good, but they're... A lot of them are during the day and whatnot. This is an all-day, during-the-day class, so...
Obviously, it's weather-pending for me.
Yes, I went... Same with me.
Yeah. We did have snow, uh, November 14th last year, so...
Bite thy tongue.
So, eight inches last year.
I guess I can't blame the snow if I... I'll have to...
Okay, that was the... That was another one you had?
Yeah. Yeah.
Then we have, uh... November 6th. The Neighbors Helping Neighbors. She does know about this, right?
That's... Yep.
She does, she should.
She does know.
Why afford it to you, didn't I?
Yeah.
I... So, yeah, I... Yeah, I all... Yeah, I got it from two different people here, so I just making sure that... Yeah. So, this is the Neighbors Helping Neighbors is receiving, or they did receive at a town meeting, actually, right? The Spirit of America Award?
Yep.
And they're being recognized on November 6th at the York County Government Building for the Neighbors Helping Neighbors with the award. So, uh, you planning on going to that?
I'm gonna try.
You're planning on going to that?
I'm planning on going to that.
Okay, good.
Um, now, I mean, I mean so...
That wasn't a question.
So, you guys have the... The snow get-out-of-free-jail card. You're just gonna keep in mind that's a day after election, so depending on... If something was to happen, I mean, my job comes first.
Yep, okay. Yep.
Like recounts.
Pass?
Like a recount.
Yeah, like, I mean, anything.
Said it earlier, bite thy tongue. So, anyway, but that...
Will you guys be joining me?
Yes.
Yep. So, but that... Yeah, it's a big deal there. I mean, that's... That's a super thing, so...
I just wanted to circle that.
Okay. So...
I just wonder what you have up your sleeve when you had agenda items like that.
Oh, no, there's nothing... Nothing they had, believe me. So... Okay. Okay, public comment. Anyone from the public? Anyone at all? We do have people sitting out there, so it's not like...
Everybody looks like they're sleeping.
Not like the night that I said that and there was absolutely nobody sitting there. You're all set, Dennis? Thank you. Okay, moving on. Announcements. Uh, I'm gonna reiterate, the Mary Grant Pumpkin Carving Party. That is on Saturday, October 19th. Two to 6:00 PM at Mary Grant Nature Preserve on San Page Road. Sounds like a great event for kids and adults alike. We have some... Still some seats open on boards. Cemetery Committee, Lincoln School Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Conservation and Forestry. We're still looking for videographers to, uh, help film some of the meetings that go on and other events. Uh, Mary Grant would be a great one to have a video, have someone out there filming that one.
Yeah, I think they normally do.